Give us a presentation and then we'll.
All right, so good evening, everyone. I'll be presenting the latest draft of the new comprehensive plan for Chapter 7. Chapter 7 is the infrastructure chapter, dealing specifically with transportation and utilities. So again, here's our work schedule. We're at November 2nd for the infrastructure chapter. Our next meeting and the final meeting of this year will be November 16th, where we deal with the first section of the environmental chapter, Chapter 5. And then we'll pick up the updated work session sometime in January. And again, here are the draft goals of the current comp plan update. So begin with changes to Chapter 7-1. This is the transportation chapter, so dealing with roads and public transportation and the like. It begins with an updated and slightly trimmed introduction and overview sections. The transportation and its impact on the community section was removed as it was very general information that was not particularly relevant. A population growth chart, the commuter destinations chart have been removed, and the future traffic condition section has been updated to reflect current traffic projections. We've updated the traffic count trends chart using current VDOT data, and we've removed a second chart for historical traffic volume as it was redundant. We've added a traffic congestion chart based on current VDOT and HRTPO data. We've removed level of service projections and consolidated them as a subsection into the future traffic condition section. We've also removed accident and crash data and the transportation demand management section. We shortened and consolidated the road network improvement studies section and removed the cost figures associated with that. We've updated the language in the traffic circulation section. We've moved citizen comments into a separate section, adding in the 2017 survey comments dealing with transportation and road construction. We've updated the Victory Boulevard widening and the With Creek Road widening projects with their current status and also with cost estimates from VDOT. We've removed the With Creek Road and Carries Chapel intersection project as it was redundant. Those improvements will be part of the With Creek Road widening project. And we've removed all the other old cost estimates for projects as they were out of date. Now, to the list of proposed road improvement projects, we've added additional road access and emergency routes. This is a combination of an emergency bypass or detour for Picousen Avenue, Little Florida Road, and Layden Way, a new connector street for the Western District, somewhere along Huntsknecht Road, and the extension of Alpha Street to City Hall Avenue. This is a combination of general project areas that have been discussed by city council and by city staff for a number of years. They would provide additional EMS and evacuation access in the event of an emergency, additional ways out of the city for subdivisions and areas that are only served by a single main access road. It would improve traffic connectivity and would have possible development benefits, specifically for Alpha Street extended in the Village Commercial area. After that section, we've added a transportation funding section to discuss Smart Scale, which is VDOT's current program for grading and evaluating transportation projects for funding purposes, and also a section on HRTPO and the role they play. Finally, we've removed the conceptual roadway section dealing with potential roads through the Big Woods as it was out of date. For the goals, objectives, and strategies, again, we've consolidated our goals into a single paragraph, and we've just made some minor updates to the objectives and strategy section to reflect proposed and new transportation projects. Not a lot of significant changes there. Moving on to Chapter 7.2, this is the utilities chapter, dealing mostly with water, sewer, and stormwater management. Begins with a streamlined introduction paragraph. We've made minor updates to the fire protection and future demand subsections. We've removed the failing septic system subsection as it was somewhat out of date. And we've updated the sanitary sewer expansion and pump station improvement section. We've removed a lot of old project information that was completed many years ago and replaced it with current projections. Currently, we are not anticipating any new major construction for any of these areas. We've updated the stormwater management section using language obtained from our city engineer. Contains better descriptions of the city storm sewer system and its current conditions. We've removed the master drainage plan subsection as it was significantly outdated. We've removed the quality control and citizen comment sections, but we've added in equality regulations and city stormwater management subsections, and those include current regulations and information on city stormwater management. Finally, we've removed the telecommunications section as that was also out of date. For goals, objectives, and strategies, we've consolidated goals into one paragraph. We've also updated objectives and strategies to reflect updated information, most importantly to reflect maintenance concerns, as we don't have any new major infrastructure projects foreseen. We've also updated it for compliance with new stormwater and TMDL, that's Total Maximum Daily Load Regulations. And that's the end of my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Okay, so we can go ahead and open the discussion on this chapter. Of course, if you have any questions of Dan, he will be happy to answer those.
Well, I'll make a couple of quick points, if I may.
All right.
First of all, I do appreciate the fact that there are some cost figures in here, because as we mentioned last week, I do think that while sometimes for some of these projects cost figures are difficult to come by, or certainly their projection, I think they provide some context for people reading the plan. I think that's a very good idea. I like the idea that is to add here about, you're calling it an infrastructure improvement master plan. I like that idea. I think that makes a lot of sense. I would suggest that maybe it's in here somewhere that there should be, we should designate who's going to do that. You know, in the service, we used to have a term called the OPR, the Officer Primary Responsibility, and everything we came down, who's in charge of making this happen? And I would like to see that in some of these places, because it's a really good idea, but you hate to see it get lost.
Right.
Now, if I can, on my two real concerns, negatives, if I may. The plan, it seems to me, as is written today, commits the city to contracting with HRT to put public transportation to precocent. I think we're going to find that is phenomenally expensive. And, you know, just the things we've read in the paper, the last number of points about the cost overruns with HRT and those sorts of things, I would rather, I'm not opposed to discussion with HRT, but I think that the plan should be more like some sort of discussion with HRT as to what the costs might be, what the options might be, and then bringing something back for city staff and perhaps council to consider. I don't think, I'm afraid that some people reading this are going to say, oh, good, the city is going to bring HRT out here, and I just, I don't think we're going to be able to do it. I'd like to, but I don't know. And secondly, you know, I think it says, you know, with an, bring service here to the intersection of Little Florida and With Creek. Well, nobody lives there. People that are going to use it still going to have to get to the bus. So I think there's a lot to be considered before we went into some contract. Again, I think that would be a better approach than sort of committing to it. And it's probably not, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I keep reading about these roundabouts on Victory Boulevard, and I think that they're going to be more trouble than good. That's just my own particular opinion. And now, again, I guess I'm dating myself, but I'm buying some people that, back when I first moved to this area, we had to circle on Armstead Avenue and Mercury Boulevard. We had to circle at Jefferson and Mercury Boulevard. They got rid of all those because they are traffic congesters, not traffic movers. If we've got 13,000 vehicles running up and down every day, or trips on Victory Boulevard, trying to go around circles where the people in the circle have the right of way, I think that's, now, I'm not a traffic engineer, so there are probably some people a whole lot smarter than me, but I'd like to hear how that's going to work before I commit it to something like that. That's my opinion. I know the option of red lights, people don't like red lights, or stoplights. Personally, I think most of the stoplights in Precocent should be flagged 19, 20 hours a day and only working when the high traffic. That's another topic. But anyhow, I don't want to sort of monopolize the conversation. Those are a couple of points that struck out to me. But I do think the idea of a comprehensive plan is a wonderful idea. I would support that.
The language on public transportation and HRT, the stuff in the chapter was already there. The objectives and strategies were, I guess, sort of aggressively updated to reflect that, so they can certainly scale that back. As for the roundabouts, that is, any language referring to those is, I guess, a remnant of a development study for the Big Woods that was done back in 2004, I think, that contained a rather ambitious development plan for the Big Woods and multiple roundabouts and all sorts of fun stuff that, I guess, it's been significantly scaled back since then. So any concept of installing roundabouts is nowhere near any, you know, even on the horizon for now. It's just kind of a proposed, this is what we could have done back in the day thing, so.
Again, I'd have to look at the word again, but I would sort of say possibly including or something gives us a little more flexibility, but that's really kind of getting in the nitty-gritty here, I really.
Mm-hmm.
They're pretty, by the way. What something says, it makes a nice entrance. Yeah, they do make a nice entrance, but I'm.
I don't like the ones in Oyster Point.
No, because nobody puts their turn signals on.
And nobody knows.
And they don't know what to do when they get in there.
We're not like the English. They know what to do with them.
Well, the Europeans.
Well, I think I agree with you on that. I, the HR, I don't know as, that was one thing I thought, too. I mean, I'm wondering how that would really, if we ever did it, I don't think it would be that.
Participating, going places on it.
I would bring a lot of people in, maybe, you know.
Even to get people out here, you know, unless they want to come farm for extra food line, it's going to have to go other places.
And they'd have them. I mean, I didn't, I saw that in there, too, and I thought, just like you.
I'm worried about the expenses. I bet you were talking about a million dollars a year.
Oh, yeah, that would be cost prohibitive.
Any other discussion, Libby?
Um, not really. I mean, I've read it all, and I mean, I hear what you're saying about roundabouts. I've seen them work well in some areas. I'm not opposed to them, but I think anything that's in here is.
Not written in stone regardless, so.
Well, sure, it's not. As it comes to fruition, then the discussion would be probably appropriate at that time.
It's a possibility, it's just a.
I also had the question about the public transit, the cost, and also bringing into, like you mentioned, to With Creek and Victory, and then there's no sidewalks to go anywhere, so you're there, but safely getting anywhere or safely getting to the bus stop without sidewalks might pose a problem, but you guys addressed that. There was also, and this is just editorial, it's little, when I was reading through the Victory Boulevard corridor study section, and it mentioned the study, and one of the recommendations was a connectivity index of 1.61 North Victory and 1.2 South of Victory Boulevard, and I don't have any idea what that means. So I was just hoping maybe if that's a recommendation, to explain what a connectivity index is or refer back in the appendix to the study, just because I have.
You don't know what that means, and neither do I.
I don't know what that means. It sounds good. It sounds very important.
I almost think it ended on you.
So that's just an editorial thing. And then lastly, as far as the sidewalks, and I don't want to speak out of ignorance, but maybe you would know, Debbie, we also have a city councilman in the audience today. I want to, as I recall, city council recently approved at least pursuing some funding opportunities for some sidewalks along Picousen Avenue, I think, around the schools. I don't want to misspeak about that, but, or if that's a done deal, or if that's just still in negotiations, if that would be included, if that would be in time to include in the sidewalks portion, that that's something that's in works.
I think that's a good point, because it's still in the planning stages at this point, or the engineering stages, so it's, it could be far enough along. If nothing else, as a project that's been completed, will be soon completed, so I think it's a great.
With sidewalks, I have a, something with sidewalks that I have to say. There's one sidewalk I'd love to see implemented, and that is the one from where it ends, almost in front of my house, up to the city park, because this time of year with the seafood festival, every year I always think that would be wonderful to have that connected, because so many people use it, and then to maintain the sidewalks that we currently have, and particularly in older section of the city. The focus of our maintenance on our sidewalk is at the gateway of Picousen. Rest of us don't get much maintenance, and thank goodness for Debbie. In the area I'm in, I've complained to poor Debbie, and she's gotten some cleanup of our group, but I hope if we do implement any more sidewalks, that they'll be maintained in all areas, because right now, they're not. I've actually, I've actually thought about taking and making a video so I could come before council and show the area that I live in, because it looks like Bosnia. And also, I wish we could get some lights, because it's so dark where we are. I thought about people, you know, walking during the seafood festival, because that's sort of a bad area. So if they can put sidewalks in, you know, it's nice, but I hope we'll maintain them. And I get a lot of people ask me about sidewalks, older areas, because they do use them, they walk them. But.
And to respond to what you said, Bonnie, the connectivity sidewalk program that the city's currently working on.
They're thinking about doing it, aren't they? That's good.
That's where, from, actually.
That's what I thought.
It ends now, close in, close proximity to your house, I guess, Forest Road.
Yep, mhm. That's going to be great. I've wanted that for so long, because that, I mean, it's a heavily used area.
I've walked that many a day. When I worked, I lived right around the corner, yeah.
I just, you know, I guess I noticed it a lot, because I thought that was the area that they were thinking.
I apologize for being late. I was actually on time, and the door was.
Oh.
I ran into that, too. I did.
Thankfully, a custodial.
I was supposed to unlock it. It's my fault. It's Libby's fault. She caught me out there.
I came, and no one was here. I thought I was. This was a memo or something.
It is no one's fault. You're the new guy, so you get blamed. That's what the rules. But I have read this. I really don't have any comment that hasn't.
I will say, as I mentioned a couple of times, I do like the fact that every chapter I've read, much more concise.
Yes, it does.
Than our previous version. I find that, personally, I find that very reassuring.
And refreshing.
Refreshing, if that's a better word.
From times past, it's just great.
I think it's going to be a much more usable document.
I do, too.
Anan has done a wonderful job.
He has, you know, it just.
Well, thank you very much.
I'd like to mention on the first page under the overview, I believe. Should we handle increases perhaps? Just to type in. Now, I'm going to play catch-up here for just a minute, but I was just wondering, since council has taken up the sidewalk issue, that funding, how is that going to be funded? And does it involve taking grid property rights, one person's property, buying property, or is it going to be done through state or, I don't know. Where it's staying, so I apologize if I'm being redundant.
I hate to tell you that I really do not know the funding. The engineering department is the one that's taken the lead on that particular issue. However, I confirm that there will be no takings.
It will not?
Everything is going to be installed within.
Fast.
But if these passes, some people that.
No, I wouldn't. I remember we had some.
Actually, the problem with sidewalks is, but everyone wants a sidewalk on some. And so when we have gone in the past, because we've had sidewalk committees, you know, if we've chased various funding sources, both at the state and, every time we would actually get close to finding a, we got a lot of pushback from the property owners. So, but I can say that the city tries, that the, since I've been here, I have never known them to connect. So, you know, they're very conscientious about recognizing, but they're trying to also understand that sidewalks and to place them within city right-of-way. Problem is, is that a lot of people don't necessarily understand where that right-of-way, where the city's part ends and their, and I get it. I mean, if you've been maintaining property out to the street for 50 years, somebody comes along and wants to disturb it, and there's always a question of liability. The property owner thinks liable if somebody's walking on a sidewalk and gets hurt. So, you know, sidewalks are wonderful, but it's very hard to determine exactly where they need to go, and then try to convince the property owner, property owners in that area, to get their support. One last thing I was going to mention.
Looking more at looking for, would the issue?
Well, I think the reason why there, the reason why I've been a little reluctant to mention the, I'm pretty sure that it's coming at a state level, and it's through a side, I mean, it's actually through a school connectivity program. So the purpose of this particular project is to create that connectivity between the schools. So the sidewalk will be installed primarily on Picousen Avenue, in the area between Forest Road and Cedar Road, and then that ultimately gets you to the city park, which allows connectivity to both the primary school and to the high school. And then the extension, there really is no extension of a sidewalk beyond Little Florida Road with the, or on Picousen Avenue beyond Little Florida Road, with the exception that what they're going to do is they're going to call crosswalks, signal crosswalks, so that you can make that connection from one side of Picousen Avenue to the other at the Little Florida Road intersection. So they're utilizing a lot of existing sidewalks to perform this. So I think the money is right, and we have the right of way, and it's a doable project.
Can I apologize for the funding source? I just.
No, I was just curious.
I didn't. Very well.
One other thing I want to ask, and I may have missed it, because I did read through this quickly, but is VDOT's new standard to install bike paths in addition to sidewalks and new projects, did I just read that, or are you familiar with that? I was just curious. I can't really put my finger on it, but it's on you, but I read about VDOT's standards, and I thought, I didn't realize that. Not that I'm opposed to it, I was just curious if that was a new standard for VDOTs.
They're constantly changing their standards, it seems like. From what I understand, the minimum sidewalk width that you can install within a city right-of-way, which has to be built to VDOT standards in order for maintenance funds from VDOT, is five feet. That's the minimum sidewalk width. However, I believe that there is a bike trail and pedestrian combination path that can be built, but I believe that the required width on that. Now, With Creek Road, you'll notice that the combination bike and pedestrian path is eight feet wide. So they've actually increased the required width since even With Creek Road was built.
That's the reason why I'm saying it kind of fluctuates.
Right.
I was just curious.
It just seems like that 10 feet is an enormous amount.
It does.
And then we're trying to fight with the stormwater regulations.
Right.
And, you know, the state's controlling how we, you know, treat our stormwater, but we're allowing or retiring additional imperfeas along the street systems for sidewalks. I mean, it's almost like a travel, a car, a vehicular travel.
Also, I wonder, too, as late as all this has been going on, is there any, I guess, considerations regarding any type of barrier on the sidewalk from the highway itself, which is happening here in New York? I think there is some question out for providing some sort of tree line or something as a barrier from the highway to that sidewalk, so would be a consideration there?
I cannot say, because we're not in the process of building new roads, except on, of course, With Creek Road. And the final designs have not yet been completed, and of course, and until they're completed, they're always subject to change. To the best of my knowledge, there is no requirement. A really good example of that is on Commander Shepherd, right there, where you're turning onto With Creek Road, where at this bike path, and it's all it is, is a striping on the road. That does seem extremely dangerous to me, especially when it actually travels or crosses over the travel lane, the vehicular travel lane. But to the best of my knowledge, there is no barrier requirement at the time.
Not a requirement.
At a requirement.
Mm-hmm. Yes, the best barrier is a curb, but even with that, it's still very.
I read something somewhere, and I can't remember where it was at, but someone, Calfee, that was looking at installing sidewalks, and one of the barriers that they were considering were a tree line barrier to prevent a vehicle coming up onto the sidewalk. So I'm not so sure, certainly, just never had, but I'm not so sure that there shouldn't be something, but that would actually. Thoughts?
I do, one more request. I'm going to request again that when the city puts out the notification of these meetings on their website, if they wouldn't mind putting a blurb about what the topic is for the work session, that would be, I think, really beneficial.
I do have one announcement, if I may. I don't know if anyone is aware of it or not, but the city has hired a new director of community development, Walter Horton, and he comes from King William County. It's going to be a very well-received asset. He'll start work, he reports on November the, he'll be here for your next work session on November the 6th. I will continue to come until my separation date from, however, I will be in a more advisory role, questions that he may not yet quite be up to speed on. Wanted to let you know that there's going to be somebody new sitting in the seats.
What was his name again?
Walter Horton.
Will you be here for our December meeting?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
That would be your last meeting?
Yes. Oh, and I think he is nicknamed Wally.
Wally?
Wally.
Wally?
Wally. So it sounds like a very nice.
That's a good sound.
Yes, I think you'll be very pleased.
You said King William County is where he was?
That's correct, isn't it, Karen? Karen was actually on the interview panel. That was.
Good. That sounds good. Well, we're looking forward to meeting. If there's nothing else, I mean, I don't see.
Oh, don't have any more announcements for us or anything? I don't, I don't think so.
Continuing, we can conclude and look forward to November 16th. We'll have our last work session for the, for this year, and then we have our regular meeting, I think, was it 4th?
Yeah.
Okay, Dan. All right. Well, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.